Yep.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order at seven and stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, amendments needed to the agenda? Any amendments?
No, sir. No amendments.
Nothing? You guys all set? Yeah. Um, approval of minutes from November 2nd? I believe there were some edits that the town manager needed on those.
Yeah, we found, uh, after the fact, we found two errors. Um, on the front page, uh, there was a typo. It just said November. It didn't say November 2nd, so we added the 2nd to it. Um, and on the last page, uh, the reason for the executive session didn't make it into the, into the minutes, so we, we added that, um, to say executive session for land lease or purchase, and then the VSA after that.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion, accept the edits to the minutes from November 2nd.
Is there a second?
Sure.
A motion by Glenn, second by Jeff, to amend the, uh, November 2nd minutes. Um, any questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes. Um, the 16th, November 16th minutes.
Motion to approve.
Are you gonna stand because you weren't here or not?
Yes.
So, let's wait.
I wasn't here.
Uh, we probably won't be able to approve them tonight. Because I don't know if Rod...
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna table the minutes from November 2nd, because Glenn and Carol weren't here. Okay, I think Bob's up next. Uh, appointment with Energy Committee for a land option request with the hydro project.
Basically, it's pretty simple and straightforward. Uh, we'd like to protect ourselves with the chance of, um, when we, when, when we do a hydro project, having at least first, first right refusal with, uh, Judge Markey's property. So, we'd have to approach him and see what he wanted to do, if he would be willing to do that first, and secondly, what would that entail? What kind of agreement did that entail? So, we're asking your permission. We have two different options for that. The first one for the committee was more preferable as that came from the select board, but we're willing to... The second option would be the Energy Committee would act as representative. But, the first one is probably more, um, it's one less, one less person in the middle of it. So, you know, if the, if the, if the town manager was doing it in, in, for the select board, but this, you know, the other option is the Energy Committee would be willing to represent you guys too, or you guys could do it. You know, it's, if you're in favor of doing it at all, obviously. But, there's, between programs already, already, um, out, um, the, the energy, the, the clean energy push and the infrastructure stuff that's coming, there's a possibility of being able to find money to do this finally. So, we don't wanna be, go, we can't go any further until we know that we have at least the option of purchasing that property. At least, you know, we can say, no, we don't want to do it, and that's either the project, but we need that first and foremost.
Questions on that?
What do you think?
I'm only, I go back to our discussion with the Energy Committee when there was, there was a request, I think, when we got the update, to buy the property, and, and basically, our discussion came down to, we weren't comfortable with doing that right off. Now, it wasn't necessarily a consensus, so we, we didn't take and make, make a motion, but I, I can remember Rod making, making the comment of, let's get some Energy Committee savings on something and use those monies if you're gonna pay for property that we've, we've invested a lot of time, that's true, we've invested a lot of money. I, I wouldn't wanna, as a member of the select board, say, I'm for first right of refusal and have you think that that means I'm for buying it. I'm not sure I am for buying it. I, I wanna see what, what, what the package looks like there, because we've spent a lot of time, energy, and money already on something that hasn't shown us any savings, so I'm not ready to...
Well, the potential for the failure is there, absolutely. And it's clean, it's clean energy, um, it's been proven, one of the things, you know, just the basics for, for, just to repeat things, is that it would pay for the electric, electricity in the town office, the town barn, uh, we thought the grade school, that changes, we'd have to find some other place to put it, but there's still that kind of potential out of that dam. Um, and there's also the fact that it's, uh, it's probably someplace between 25 years and 30 years payback for the, for the entire bond issue. And it's a 50-year project. It's, so, so there's money there. There's, it's not even a, it's not even not a guarantee, it's there.
Yeah, and Bob, I'm not worried about the payback. What I'm worried about is, we have a state that, that, and I believe we're fighting the state and Green Mountain Power at the same time, and even if you're, there's all kinds, and we hear there's all kinds of money and everything, I'm not... After the person who was talking, the water runoff that came in here, the one thing I, I took from her a couple of meetings ago was, the state's leaning to the natural river flow and everything. Us putting a, a hydropower plant is totally in a different direction from that. So, I'm, again, I, I'm, I was always for hydro, and, and I, I believe that payback is there and all that. I just don't believe in spinning my wheels for another 20 years, trying to get something that has had a lot of trouble getting traction, and quite frankly, I don't see what Act 250 they're looking at again. Maybe if they change some Act 250, I still think we would have the river corridor issue that's going on, and it's not one that's saying, hey, let's put dams in, uh, right now, so I'm, I'm...
That's, that's not an argument.
I, I, all I'm, all I'm saying is, I don't want the town to take more land off the tax rules and own a piece of land that ultimately, we're not gonna use for anything. As far as going out, and, uh, if the committee wants to talk with Mr. Markey and it doesn't cost taxpayers anything for you to get first right refusal, go, go right ahead. I don't, I can't, I can't promise that that's okay. I, because that's the only way...
Why would anybody do that?
That, that's the only way I'd support it.
Jeff, what do you get?
Oh, I, I'm a little less, uh, rigid than that. I, I think the, yeah, I guess part of me is just nostalgic for the project. We've been doing it so long that I hate to see it go down the tubes. And if we could get a right of re, first refusal for a nominal fee, I, I would imagine that the landowner will, any landowner would say, oh, you, you need this to do your project, it's gonna cost you some, some money.
I, I can't imagine it wouldn't. I haven't, we haven't made any overtures at all.
Exactly.
Mr. Markey said for this public meeting.
So, like going to it with your eyes open, you know, saying that it probably will cost something. I, um, you probably don't wanna reach out without the board being supportive, is the...
Exactly. I mean, it, it, it makes absolutely no sense.
Well, maybe that's a conversation for a bigger board.
That's, uh, before I would jump out and do that, if we wanted to have something where more of the taxpayers, if the taxpayer's at the town of Perry Haven, said, let's go, let's go spend more money for a hydro project that we hope to, in the next 15 years, make it happen, I'm, I'm all for it.
I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that the town still supports that. I, I, I don't know why, you know, when you think about it, everybody you talk to, or people I talk to just say, why aren't we doing something? But, when it comes to a bond issue, that may be a different story completely, but, uh, I think, I think the support is there to certainly keep, keep it on the burner, if, back burner, whatever, but, and the first, and the, the first thing that has to happen, in my, my opinion and the opinion of the Energy Committee, is, is that we, we have to at least have the op, opportunity to buy the property if we decide we need it. And we can't do that if, you know, Markey sells it and somebody puts in, develops that property for something else. That's, that's where we stand, and that's what, what we're looking for.
From my end, Bob, I support the project. I think, I think it's viable. When we looked at the numbers, I mean, I think it's, it's there. Now, the ownership, uh, creates a conflict for me, because I'm related to the, the owner of that property now. So, I, I don't know. I, I'm gonna talk to Joe about whether there is a conflict there or not, but in general, I, I support it, and I would support you guys moving forward with trying to at least get the option on the table and see what, see where it goes.
It doesn't seem like that would hurt.
I mean, maybe, maybe it's 50 grand and that's just not feasible. Maybe it's 500 bucks. I have no, I have no idea.
And I, I, I can't, I'm not making promises.
Yeah, no, exactly.
I can't have any idea what it would be.
Yeah.
I, I would suspect some place under, under 50 grand, someplace over 500.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah.
You know, that's, that's a...
I'd be willing to look at it if you came back with solid numbers, but I'm not willing to say I support it.
Okay.
Yeah, I support hydropower. I just believe that we, I, I don't support sending you out to do all kinds of work on something that's not gonna happen and hasn't happened. I'd, I'd be a little more optimistic if I saw any movement that, that said, just because there's money available, doesn't mean that the state will give us the necessary permitting and, and, and we'll be able to dr, go through the other hurdles. Say nothing about the bond vote, because this, we, we will be talking some major money for building it. And I'm just going, I'm concerned, is all I'm saying, that it's, that it's, our energies could be put to other use in other directions.
Well, then I, you know, then we will not continue. You guys could have, uh...
I think the best bet, Bob, would be to, I mean, we received the information now, the request, is to put it back on the agenda when the full board is here. Um, I don't know where Bo, where Rod stands on it. I have nev, I haven't talked to Rod about it, so I'm not sure where he's, where he's at it. I can get some clarification with the town manager on ownership issues and then, um, discuss it a little bit more at the next meeting, if that's fair for, for everybody.
We're looking, we're not going to do anything else on the hydro project until we, until we get to that point, because that's the next step. And it's, 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 it's further concerns a minor step, and, and the hydro project isn't the only thing the Energy Committee's working on.
Yeah.
I can report that some of the things we're working on didn't get very good conclusions, but, uh, we'll continue on other things.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's a resource that we have in this town that we shouldn't waste. And I, I get the, the fear of what the state is going, but they're not gonna tear down dams. So, so we have that. That dam is there, it's viable. It will be, uh, it, it will be, it could be used. And the, the bottom line, the bottom line, uh, to scare you even more, six or seven years ago, the, the, the bond issue was in, you know, around between 3 and 5 million dollars.
Sure.
So, it's not horrible money, it's just money. But, it's probably more, everything costs more now, but, you know, that's, I'll leave it to you guys to discuss and get back to it. And we will continue on other things with, with the, uh, with the hydro still there, and hopefully it will get a favorable view from you guys.
And I'm not saying that you have to stop altogether if you, if you see there's opportunity for grants. I don't see that the big lynchpin is having to run out and buy that piece of land right now.
We're not talking about buying it, we're just talking, we won't...
Take ownership.
The whole idea is just to have the, just to have that if it's, if it becomes necessary, you know, and it, it really doesn't make any sense to do anything else until we do that, until we have that decision.
Fair enough.
So, Joe, can you put that on the next agenda, just so we...
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, did you have anything else from Energy Committee, or are you all all set?
No, not from the Energy Committee.
Good. Uh, questions?
Been sleeping with us under your pillow for these years?
Yeah. I have. Finally gave my web conference, but I needed to give it to you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Uh, five minutes for public comment. Anybody for public comment? Bob?
I haven't been paying attention. I just wonder, have you guys talked at all about opening the town up for, for a marijuana dispensary?
I think Joe informally has. Has anything come?
No, but in fact, on your, uh, on the table in front of you, there were...
We're gonna be talking about candidates, some tailing licensing.
Some additional articles for, uh, for the next warrant. I started working on the warrant today, in fact, and one of those is written, drafted for the board to review.
I haven't reviewed it yet, but I, I know Joe has been working.
I don't care what's in the other, but it just seems we have open storefronts, and it doesn't make any sense not to, not to give that opportunity.
Yeah.
Somebody will.
Anything else, Bob?
Got in a box of pictures.
Just a random picture?
I don't have a picture, I don't have a picture of me here.
Me and my mom.
Oh.
I'll look for one for you.
Yeah, thank you. How did you get them?
From, from my mother.
From your mother, yeah.
Um, others for public comment? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Um, I'm just looking for clarification. My name is Melanie Pong.
Yeah.
I'm, uh, the deacon at St. Luke's Episcopal Church here in town.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, um, the town manager is bringing our, our issue under?
Yeah, do, are you gonna do it under your board, your manager? He's gonna do it under his manager's report. Yeah, so you don't have to do it in public comment, we can discuss during that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, department head reports. Looks like you've got all of this tonight.
Looks like we'll start with, I get to be the police chief. All right, so for, uh, since our last meeting, our police department's had seven arrests. People have seemed to go a little, a little wild with the, with the theft. We got a little bit of pet, uh, two petty larcenies, they picked up a wanted person, sorry, three petty larcenies, um, some DUIs, and then driving with the license suspended. The chief has been keeping an eye on the, uh, the Boy Scout bottle bin over at Shaw's. We've, that's been hit a couple of times, people have been taking, you know, taking bottles out of there. They did pick up two folks for stealing out of that, that bin. The young man that was breaking into cars, we had to pick him up again. He was squatting in a, in a building downtown. We picked him up and arrested him. Uh, he is back out on bond. So, let's see, uh, Thanksgiving, on Thanksgiving Day, our police department, uh, helped with the highway safety campaign, uh, making sure folks are safe and sober out there. If anybody saw it, Sergeant Kerber was featured on WCAX News Report about 22A.
Yeah.
He made us look good. He was...
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and we wrapped up, so they were doing some construction out on Route 4. We were providing, um, a detail out there with our blue lights going. Uh, that actually brought in more than 30, $9,300 in revenue, so, um, and for, for those interested, that does cover the officer cost, car cost, and then any insurance, although that, the individuals out there were not on the town insurance.
Joe, do you know what they're doing out there? Do they, is it new signage?
Uh, you know, I don't know what they were doing.
Yeah, I don't know.
New signage?
My, my, my.
Gotcha, okay. Just curious.
Um, and also to the police department, I know this does cause, uh, some people to, to, uh, get upset. Perhaps they think that we don't have coverage in town. I let the police chief know we don't want to lose coverage in town, so if it's somebody sitting out on the road, um, or doing a detail somewhere else, that's a part-timer, um, coming in and working. So, it actually improves coverage, it doesn't reduce coverage in the village. That's what I have for the police.
Okay. Questions for the police department? Thanks, Joe. DPW?
Yeah. Uh, we'll start with the highway side. Uh, we got a little bit of snow, uh, over the holiday weekend. Uh, DPW's happy to report that it was mostly uneventful. The equipment worked, it worked well. No, again, uneventful, nothing, nothing bad really happened. I did get a call about some, uh, grass, got a little gouged up from our sidewalk plow, but the ground is still soft, so we, I guess we kind of expect that right now. Some of our equipment's put away, they serviced everything and stored it up last week, so that's, that stuff's ready to go when the time comes in the spring. Uh, and they're still cleaning up right now, as, uh, it's noted, the, the trees are still pretty heavy with ice and snow. The guys are still out there checking the roads and then cleaning up any downed trees that, uh, that happened to crack or break, or, and land in the road. Uh, the water side, they're cleaning out the chemical storage tanks right now on the plant, uh, just, they're getting ready to get another big load coming in, so they wanted to do that.
I didn't get that at all.
They're cleaning out the chemical storage tank.
Oh.
At the water plant. Uh, they have swapped out a few more of those, the, the new meters. With COVID, that really slowed us down, but most of them are done. As a board, we'll be asking, uh, we'll be asking the board to set a fine for those who refuse to have, uh, have their meter replaced. Right now, it's...
How big a number is that, Joe? Of number of people that haven't had it done?
I wanna say it's less than 100 right now.
Oh, we have close to 100 that refuse to have a lot of it?
Less than 100, yeah.
Less than 100?
Okay.
Yeah. I haven't got an update on the number in a while, but it's, we're coming down to it where it's a handful of folks that, I mean, maybe they're not in town, or maybe they just, they don't believe in the technology, I don't know, but, we're getting close. Uh, Adam Street Bridge, oh, that's too bad. Adam Street Bridge Waterline Crossing is being fixed right now, they started working on it today. Um, and talking about the Adam Street Bridge, we did not receive the grant to, uh, to get that bridge replaced. We asked for one and a half million, they said, thanks, but no thanks. I did send, so maybe I'm just feeling a little, like my feelings were hurt that I haven't won this grant yet, um, because I've asked twice now. But I did send an email to Bernie Sanders saying, hey, look, we're competing with people like Manchester, New Hampshire, who have 100,000 people, and those cities are considered rural, just like we are. Or Burlington, who got a walking bridge, they're considered rural, just like we are, and we have 3,000 people. So, I did send a, a message to our representatives, saying, hey, it's really not fair that we're competing with Burlington and Manchester, we don't have the capacity.
Good for you, Joe.
Yeah. They did, they sent me some nice responses back, so, um, give us some ideas for how to get this...
But no money.
No check.
Money didn't go.
All right.
Uh, wastewater plant, that, that upgrade is still going. The good news on this is, there will be no winter shutdown this year. We're gonna keep working straight through, um, stay on, uh, stay on schedule, maybe even ahead of schedule, you know, not, knock on wood. Uh, we did have a site visit from the state today, uh, just to check up on our operations, see how we're doing, um, and then how the plant, uh, plant operator's going. They offered suggestions just for backup systems, like when a clarifier goes down, what's our plan in case something happens there, which we have a plan in place. And they're gonna provide us with a report about what they saw at the plant, so that's, that's coming. And that's DPW.
Okay, questions for DPW?
Are we still, and this is probably more of a question for Aaron, but are we still using the brine system, or is that just parked in the barn?
No, we're still using it.
Okay.
They, they, I don't know if they use it this, uh, this storm, but it's mostly for pre-treat, to make sure we get, yeah.
Okay.
And, um, they took a class on how to use the, how to better, you know, get more mileage out of the brine. And I know they'll spray a little bit and salt at the same time, so that way that salt comes down and kinda sticks to the road, as opposed to just bouncing off.
Good.
Yeah. So, it's gonna take some, we've had it for, what, two years now? And we're getting better use out of it.
Yeah, just wondering, I think.
Are there questions?
Nope.
All right, Joe, uh, town manager report?
Town manager. And we'll start with St. Luke's Episcopal Church, since we have, uh, contingent. Uh, we did receive a request from St. Luke's. Um, St. Luke's has concern about the parking on Main Street and Allen, and, uh, Allen Ave or Allen Street?
Allen.
Allen Avenue. I think it was last year, we started receiving kind of a lot of complaints about the number of cars parked along Allen. Um, in response to that, we did reinstall the no parking signs. It has been no parking there. And that's kind of alleviated that, that, that problem with, with parking on Allen. The concern from the town side, um, is that when you're coming off of Allen, heading towards North Main, if, if cars are parked along Allen, it narrows that road to the point where cars coming onto Allen and cars going off to Allen end up kind of in a, they meet head-on, causing, you know, I don't know if there's been any accidents, but causing trouble. In addition, site distance is a big problem on that corner. People will park as close as they can to the corner on both sides. So, with cars parked on Allen, cars parked on North Main, as you pull out, you really can't see north or south, um, as you're sitting there at the stop sign, so you gotta kinda inch out into North Main, putting you right in traffic. Okay, I think, I think I went too far with that one. So, that was the town side, and Saint, uh, I think St. Luke's can, can give you their, their version.
Okay, but my name is Chaz Coletti, and, uh, I'm the senior warden at St. Luke's. Melanie has already introduced herself. I think you have a copy of the letter?
Yeah.
That I sent. First of all, I wanna thank Joe, I think he invited me down, and we just discussed our position, and he advised me to, uh, put it in writing, and you have that in front of you. It's, it's pretty self-explanatory. I'm gonna turn this over to Melanie to explain further, and she's been a longtime member and leader and deacon at St. Luke's, and, uh, you know, we have the letter here, and, uh, if you want to scoundon it, Melanie?
Yeah, I've got my copy, Chad.
Okay.
It's in the back. Do you all have photographs of the area you're talking about? Because I did bring some of that to you.
Yeah, we've got it.
Okay. There are, um, a number of things that, I'll try to stand sort of just for clarity in voice. A couple of things, we were kind of wondering when this all kind of came to life, to the point where these signs, from our perspective, um, appeared, um, as long as I have been there. And I've talked to other people in our congregation. In terms of the Allen Street side, we do not recall having the signs up at all. We do agree that if people park too close to the intersection with Main, that it is cause for concern, great concern. Some of it is because people coming off of North Main, if you're heading towards Fairhaven, because the curb is rounded, it's not squared up, they tend to cut that as close as they can. We've had people there, um, on the one side outside, and notice to ourselves, and you don't have to be parked necessarily right on the corner. The, um, visual problem coming up into the intersection, we also agree with, that it is a concern. Our, our first, um, kind of surprise happened when, I don't know if that was a town decision or the state, was the last time, I think, that end of town got paved, and, um, the no parking signs went up on the North Main Street side, on both sides of Allen, um, along with the hash lines for no parking. And we thought, oh, well, okay, we can still park on Allen Street, it'll be all right. And we kinda understood why, because those of us who park on Allen or Allen Ave notice coming out again, that you can't see unless you creep out a little bit. So, we don't necessarily disagree with, um, the problem. We're just trying to maybe, uh, come up with a compromise with the town, with the select board, with whomever does make these decisions, um, for a way to, um, adjust, um, the lack of parking that has happened. has happened. It's really, to be honest with you, may just feel like we've been pushed out of the neighborhood. We don't have the liberty of a driveway even, so we couldn't even put one person that was handicapped close to the building. The driveway that's behind church on Allen Ave., that belongs to the house that's there. And then we have people who park on Allen Ave., rightfully so, if they don't have enough room in their own driveway. So, for the limited time that we would like to be able to park in that vicinity, sometimes we can't. Crossing, if you've ever been up there, walking maybe, especially certain times of day, it can be dangerous, just trying to cross from one side of North Main to the other, with or without the crosswalk, which is, I believe, the crosses between Teresa Fisher's house and, you know, Van Ness's house. So, I, I, I guess I was also kind of concerned, or maybe even a little disappointed, that we weren't notified that this problem was this big, that it just caused the town to put up signs to, to fix the problem. We would have loved to have had a conversation a lot sooner, to see what maybe compromise we could all come to on this. So that's, that's really why we're here tonight, is to hopefully start that conversation and, and see if there's, there's room for some middle ground to be found. We are open all the time, I know it happened when we were closed because of COVID, I mean, everything's closed, but we were still there, we are still here. And, you know, Sunday mornings is probably the biggest time, but we, the building's also in use by other organizations and any outreach that we do. So I'm hoping that maybe, you know, I have several ideas, but I don't know if this is the time to, to bring them up, or if, if there's another meeting you'd like us to come to.
That's me, sorry.
No.
I didn't sign with my phone. Joe, do you want to give us a little background on-
When and why?
When the signs, I mean, I-
When, how, why?
Has it always been no parking there, it's just been signage has been updated?
I, I wouldn't say always, but I, I did look back to see when the change in the, in the ordinance happened, because, you know, we keep records.
Yep.
As far back as the 90s, as far back as I have, I couldn't find the change. It's always been no parking on Allen Ave.
Yep.
When, when the signs disappeared, I, you know, we can't say, but-
No parking on the entire street, or just?
That, near the corner, I think it's 40 feet from corner back. Yeah, so it's always, whether we've abided by it or not, it's always been no parking in that area. It really kind of came to head last year when we had some residents almost get into an accident, and their, their children almost get into accidents at that, at that intersection. At that point, we looked, thought maybe we should put in no parking signs, and it turned out it was already no parking, so we just put up, there was already no parking already, so we just reinstalled the signs. So I did talk to the police chief and DPW about this intersection, and they both agreed that it is a bad and very dangerous intersection with cars parking up as close as they do. It's really a bad situation for the church, I understand, but from the town's perspective, allowing cars to park that close to that intersection creates much more of a hazard than somebody trying to use the crosswalk.
And I know even the catch basin on the, the side coming towards North Main, that really pushes you towards the, the center of the road, to avoid that catch basin there. So I think there's, that's contributing a little bit to it as well. Questions from the board? I mean, this isn't on the agenda for action tonight, so I think we just want to hear everybody's opinion of it, and then if the board wants to look into it further, they could put it on a future agenda, so other people are warned and have, have a chance to come and voice their concerns as well. Chaz, go ahead.
I can mention, I can't give you the exact date, but probably two or three years ago, the striped signs, the, the stripes on the street, on the corner of Main Street were put in. Previous to that, there were, there were no stripes that indicated no parking, so that's-
On North Main?
Yes.
Yeah. And I believe that was all done by the, the state.
That's relatively new.
Yep. Sharon?
Can I just make a comment? I live on Codarven Street, right at the very end of Allen Ave.
Yep.
And I have questioned Joe a couple of times about this intersection, because what my family was finding was that people were parking right at the stop line in the street, going towards North Main Street. And they were also parking right in front of the church and right in front of Teresa Fisher's.
Yeah.
And what ends up happening is, as Joe is describing to you, you stop at the stop sign because someone's parked next to the stop sign on that line, and someone might be parked on the north side, so that would be the south side, and then the north side. Someone coming from, let's say, the north or the south on Main Street coming into Allen Ave., it's almost a head-on sort of scenario. So, we hope, and I speak for my family, we lived there for 15 years, had six drivers going up and down that street, and it's not just some days, it's, it's quite a few days a week that we have that scenario happen. Or you're trying to go onto Main Street and inching into the southbound lane and almost getting clipped. Had a couple of very, very near misses. And also at the evenings, when the church has groups there and whatever, they park as, they, and I say "they," and I don't mean any disrespect, it's a natural thing to park as close to the place you're going as possible, but this situation happens again and again. I can't tell you how many times I've almost hit people crossing the street, it's dark there, it's not very well lit. There's so many things happening at that intersection. And it is unfortunate to not have parking closer to the, to the corners, but I do have to say, since those signs have been up, I can breathe easier, I don't feel like I have to avoid that intersection as I'm leaving my home. And I, I don't know what a compromise would look like, but I just, for everyone's safety, I think that the way things are right now is optimal. I'm not saying that there can't be a little bit of a change, but not being able to see car traffic when you're, you know, trying to drive is, is huge. And because of the lines in front of the church and Teresa Fisher's, and because of the please no parking, you know, from here to the corner, it's made a vast group.
Other, like I said, we're not going to take any action, we're just looking for feedback, so go, go ahead.
Feedback would probably be good, it would help you to make a well-rounded decision.
Yeah.
Some of this, and it's water under the bridge, but I'd like to just say it, that possibly some of this could have been avoided if we had been approached and said, "Hey, you know, when you have functions there, it looks like people are parking practically in the street, could you ask them?" But no one, as far as I know, did that. I don't even, I don't know, once we're inside, if we realize who's still outside, but we could have found creative ways of avoiding that, getting cones, or having someone stay outside long enough to make sure people didn't park on top of those intersection corners. So, that being said, going forward, is that possibly part of a compromise? That, I don't know, do you have older photos?
Which one do you have?
I, these are this past May.
No, this one's older.
Only because they're just in terms of where the signage is now, and a couple of like-
It's like 20 o'clock.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just wanted to show you.
Yeah, that's fine.
I've only got like three of each, so you may have to share. And they're pretty much from similar angles.
Yep.
But this, that first one I just did, shows you both sides of the street, it's not quite up to the intersection, but these are similar.
Oh, yeah.
So, so see where, with, I think the picture that you have-
It's the same.
Has the cars, but it has the cars parking.
The no parking is like right there.
And the signs are not there, the phones I gave you, the signs-
But this, this now is no parking here.
So this is no parking. It's down here, where's that, almost at the end here, Teresa's bush, where it starts on the other side.
Yeah.
Oh, here, this is, might be a better one from that one.
You got a different one?
Maybe that one there. It's not the same angle, but-
Yeah, no.
So it shows you where the no parking signs are now. So possibly, I mean, I sort of came up with a, a couple of ideas that may or may not work. Number one is, there's limited parking, or restricted parking, on certain days. Or put the spaces back, not all of them, like, I'd say, you know, possibly those one or two that are in the photo that you all have on the church side, and maybe one on the other side. Or two on Teresa Fisher's side, and one way down by that driveway on the church side. And signage, or something that says, you know, reserved for church functions, I don't know if you can do it, I'm just throwing it out there.
Sorry, that's a public space.
Or something, or, no, I don't, I don't know.
Didn't you want it for handicap parking?
Well, there you go.
What about handicap parking spaces?
That would, you know, and that's something else I put on here, but I don't know if you can, if you can do that, they'd have to be delineated probably.
Handicap accessible, though.
I'm sure that at least a couple of the neighbors, like Van Ness's, you know, they're very, they're very nice about moving vehicles, Sunday mornings especially, if, if they know that, you know, obviously, we don't want our 85 and 90-year-old congregants to be walking halfway up Allen Ave. if we don't have to. It is what it is, but-
We do have some congregants who are not.
Or if it can be, you know, either limited days of the week, or time, or, you know, try a good faith effort of asking us to, we're going to do this, but part of it is our responsibility to make sure people don't park there when we're having functions. We can't control what the neighborhood does, the rest of the neighborhood, we are part of that neighborhood. But we can do that when we're there, and make, and monitoring where people park. If, if there's another, if the line starts here, and, well, you can't tell from this one, but maybe this one here, I don't know, it's maybe up in here in the shadows or somewhere, but that would give at least two spaces back. We're not looking for everything right up to the door of the curb. We have people, you know, sort of escorted, dropped off at the door now, escorted in, those who wouldn't be able to walk distances anyway. So, that's what I, I guess what I'm talking about in terms of a compromise. I understand the North Main side, and I don't think, you know, I, I agree with that, that's like, you don't want people, it's tricky parking on the other side of North Main and getting close enough to a curb so you're not out in the street with your vehicle, as it is, heading north, towards Stewart's, but-
All right, other-
I think that's just part of, I mean, I don't know if I have any others.
You need it?
No.
Are those the same ones?
Yeah.
That's the other?
I mean, we'd be willing to go out there, you know, purchase cones or signage, so that people also don't cut the corner. We can't, we can't determine how people drive, but if we can do something to make it a little safer, at least while we're there, so that's, we're just trying to find middle ground.
Any other feedback or questions?
Just, just one, short term, though, you're taking, there's people who you, they're all, they are able to stop, unload, and let someone use, like, the handicap accessible, I see the ramp that, that's there, and then they'll go, they'll go park, so you're able-
And they park, you know, all down further, or up further along North Main.
So you're still, so giving, so designating some drop-off and pickup place would or wouldn't-
Well, it's, you know, not everyone's in that-
I guess that's my, that's what my-
Not everyone's in that situation. We have some quite elderly folks who just don't drive, so the person who brings them, drives them off and then goes and parks. We have other people who are elderly, drive themselves, and are attempting to walk back up a street that may not be plowed when the winter's coming, or, you know, I-
All right.
So just trying to find-
Anything else, Joe, from your end? Like I said, it's not on the agenda for action, so if the board wants to move forward with discussing further, we'll put it on the agenda for a future meeting.
That distance is not arbitrary, right? There's a-
No, that's-
There's got to be state statute.
There's a statute.
That is, this is what it's got to be.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
It's 40, 40 feet to the corner.
And that's where the sign is?
That's where the sign is, that's where it starts.
Okay. Joe, we'll let you guys know when we have it on the next agenda.
Yes.
Yep, and it will be publicly posted, so other-
Thank you for your-
Other folks that may have concerns that live on the street, or may, they're more than welcome as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming in.
Joe, next on your update?
Oh, yeah, let's keep going, man.
Why'd you remind him?
Yeah, we should have been, we should have been moving up.
Thank you, Joe, for your recorder.
Done.
Too late.
You're done.
A little more correspondence, and this is, this is going to come back, come back to greet us next, at the next meeting. The property owner who bought, or the new property owner who bought 12 South Main sent a letter to the board requesting a tax abatement for his new property. Suzanne is scheduling that, the Board of Abatement, she's scheduling the Board of Abatement meeting for, not next Tuesday, the Tuesday after, but there was a letter sent to the board about that.
Do you know, what's the, not that, what they're requesting, but what's the back?
Back taxes. So, the sale of the property did bring in a little bit of money, not as much as we'd hoped. Back, back taxes were $12,341, and there was about $1,600 in sewer. The, the town will, we will be getting some money back from the Clark Estate, $2,000 for the taxes, and $238 for the water. So it's not a complete, it wouldn't be a complete loss, we will scrape some of that back.
And this is the house right over the tracks, going up south?
Yep, 12, 12 South Main.
All right.
No, let's see if we still have anything. Energy Committee left, we scheduled, on their request, we did schedule an energy audit for, that's going to happen on December 2nd. We talked about the tax abatement. Just as a heads up, the, the trailer park does have the Green Mountain Mobile Manor. Their bill, water bill was paid by the state, we're back to over $9,000 in water bill on that property.
Just in one quarter?
In one quarter.
So they didn't find the leak?
The, the leak apparently was not discovered.
Sure seems like it, yeah.
Or maybe they made it bigger, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
1012 Adams, the health officer may have a little bit of information on this, but as far as I know, the health order has not been complied with. So, so the, the health order expires today, unless they do something in the next few hours. I sent the order over to legal, and they'll be moving it through, from here on out, they'll move it through the court to, to try to gain some level of compliance from these folks. Justin, I need to say it, I know I sound like I'm being apologetic, or, I, I don't know, but we did try to, we've been trying to work with this property owner for almost two years to clean that lot up, and with almost no success, because we've just had to come down to it where it's like, "Do it, or we go to court," and that's, we've done everything we could. We did hold a VT Alert training on the 24th with me and the, the emergency management staff, like the police chief and the fire chief, Aaron, that went really well. Um, I'm working on the warning right now, uh, for, for March. In front of the board, I did leave some, uh, potential articles. We will be talking about those, uh, also at a later meeting. We did not receive the grant. The dog park wetland permit is posted. That, uh, unless we get some kind of negative feedback on that permit, the final permit should be issued on or around December twenty-seventh. I'm working on, uh, properties just out of my office. I'm working on, um, tax sales and working with people to get their back taxes paid. The NEPA for the park in the Parking Ride Project, um, that's moved past, the, the final design has moved through the state now. Um, we're waiting on NEPA, which is still going and that, we shouldn't expect that before May. That's a long environmental review. Salt Shed, um, we did reject all bids on that project. We're gonna, we're working with the state to re-scope that to hopefully bring it into something smaller, something more manageable for us. Playground Equipment, I'm wait, I'm waiting on the final design. I can place that order. I wanted to do it last week, but we had a short week. Um, I'm hoping to place the playground equipment order this week. So she said she'd get me back to me with me today. She didn't. Oh, and a little bit more on Adam Street Bridge to, I'm going to burn all the time today. Uh, we did receive two hundred thousand dollar grant from the state, um, and I did, uh, look to them for some guidance on what to do with that two hundred thousand. I thought maybe we could use that for scoping and, um, kind of use their two hundred thousand dollar grant to build us up to like shovel ready. And then when the infrastructure, big infrastructure money comes out, then we jump on it. Uh, they recommended to hold that two hundred thousand. It's, we keep that money until twenty twenty-three. They recommend holding it until the infrastructure money does come out from the feds and then use that as, as federal match because that's state money. So, uh, that's their recommendation. If it doesn't pan out that we don't get the grant, any federal grants, um, we can use that money to do all the engineering and hopefully start applying again after that for, for other money. And I think that's it.
Okay.
Is it too much?
No, you're good. Questions for Joe?
Just, just one and on the, uh, a while back, we had the, uh, the Grape Street, uh, thing over, the trailer going in and everything. I haven't seen any answer to, to that or just, is there a status? What's going on there for the folks that, that were concerned and came out and forth?
Yep, so I, I have got this question. I was supposed to bring this up. Um, that issue, so the permit, just as the backstory, a permit was issued. It was, there was a, an appeal to, um, our town committee. And that committee held up, held up the zoning permit to allow the trailer to go in. The next step would be to then take an appeal to the, I think, environmental court. That appeal didn't happen. So the permit to put in the trailer stands and that person can now put in a trailer. Um, we don't put our, um, and Phil, you, if I say something wrong, please let me know.
I'll be correct you, sure.
Um, we don't put our, we don't, we haven't put our, um, decisions for zoning onto the website. Uh, it's not to say we can't, it's just not a practice that we've done.
I just haven't seen any minutes or anything posted for what's going on. The, the bigger question for me on that was this whole question, the trailer and going on that site. And I, and it's been explained to me about this, the state, and we can't stop it. And it's also been explained to me that yes, we can, if we had the zoning, uh, if our town was zoned not to have trailers in a residence that wasn't harmonious here. And I know we're looking at zoning right now. And all I ask is that the folks that are working on the zoning we do now, we take, our grand list takes a pretty good hit when we lose a house and replace with a trailer. I just would ask that they, that the group looks at what that verbiage would look like. I know other towns have verbiage that wouldn't allow that trailer to go in or, or shouldn't allow. I, I may be speaking, correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, I may, I may be.
Yeah, I, I'm just not, not aware of that unless it's a design control district, something that has regulations about what you can put in and what it will look like. So, uh, maybe the, uh, Rutland Regional Planning Commission can give us some kind of idea that way. But I'm just not familiar with anything that can exempt a structure, whether it be a, uh, trailer or a modular house or a pagoda if someone wanted to, to put in something different from the other housing. Unless it's a mobile home park, which you can restrict to certain districts. Individual homes, I'm not aware of any, any way to prohibit them that way.
But I certainly think that regional can be asked and they would be the ones I would think that would be able to grow any information about other, other talents. Other, other talents to see how they would dress.
Right, right.
Because then we can't continue to take the hit on the grand list.
I understand your concerns. It's, it's just, there's no way that I know of with our zoning, uh, to be able to say you cannot replace a stick-built house, you know, bulldoze it down and put up a modular or, or a mobile home. But I may not be informed of all the, the possibilities.
And that's all I, all I ask is we, we look into it.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm just trying to head off another room full of people not happy with a trailer going in on their street.
I understand.
I think at Carnarvon Street, for example, someone comes in and the house goes down and, and let's, let's put a trailer on Carnarvon.
Yep.
I bet we'd have the same issue.
I, I understand what you're saying exactly.
Okay.
And I, I certainly don't have a problem with contacting, regional contacting as well. We've been trying to, to get a read on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for Joe? All right, thanks, Joe. Um, old business, we have the appropriation policy, which I believe we made more changes at the last meeting, so hopefully, I know there was a couple of folks not here, but Jeff, Rod and I made a couple of changes. Basically, the changes we made at last meeting were to give folks time if they presented their letter and it didn't have the corresponding, um, information that was required, that they would have time to then go back out and get a petition. So I think Rod was that, wanted that in there and then we fixed the section that's for equal quarterly payments and not four payments of the same amount.
Would you like a motion?
Yeah, if you guys are good with it, we're.
I'm, I'll make a motion to accept the social service appropriation policy as written.
Okay, a motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol to approve the appropriations policy as presented. Uh, questions on that? Questions? Um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Joe, you'll let some of the folks that were waiting on this know or?
Yeah, I'll let, uh.
Probably won't affect most of them anyways because they're.
Yeah, they've, I've already received seven or eight requests.
And I put a letter on your file there.
Yes, including the.
The bus. You've got that one?
Yep. I did reach out to, uh, one organization who had sent their, um, information previously, so I talked to them. I emailed them today just to let them know about it.
All right, uh, no new business, uh, budget review?
So this is organized a little bit weird. Uh, the top box, this is the, these are the departments that people are here wanting to talk tonight. So I kind of put them up front so they didn't have to listen to me talk anymore.
All right, um, listers?
Listers.
All right, um, first I want to say, because we have a new board member and a fairly new board member, while we are elected by the town citizens and paid by the town, technically we work for the state. We are charged with keeping an accurate, up-to-date grand west period. That's our job. It affects the income of the town and everything. So every year when we make out a budget, we try to stay within our budget. We try not to go over our budget if possible. But I don't see, we're in our second cycle. We just finished our second cycle of COVID. Last year in twenty twenty, we could not do any safety events. In nineteen, we could not do any. So right now we have over seventy-five active building permits that need to be dealt with. We just processed sixty-five property transfers since July because of the boom. So I don't see, we don't see our workload decreasing by twenty percent in the next year. If we get caught with COVID again this year, it's just going to pile up again to the point where we don't grow any budget all the hell to get there. Right now we have many houses. I counted over thirty-three houses that are just sold. And they've sold way over the assessed value. Some of them is much as three hundred thousand. Those houses need to be looked at. They need to be reassessed. We're, we're still probably three, four years from being able to have a reappraisal. It takes us, according to the state, it will take us a couple of years just to even hire anybody if we can get it done that quick. So we got a lot of work. So basically I just don't see where, we can try, we can try to stay five thousand dollars on here, but I don't see where our work is going to drop by twenty percent going forward. So that's, that's, I just want you to understand that. We have to do the grand list. If we run out of budget in March, we don't have the option of just saying, well, we'll get it next year. It, it just doesn't work that way. So, but I'm saying, we'll, we'll try to stay within budget best we can. But we have no way of knowing about grievances or anything that comes along. We did not anticipate sixty-five property transfers this year. And that's basically all I would say.
I, I would like to add that we were, the board was very kind in giving us extra money to do a lot of scanning of our old records, which desperately needs to be done. We have not been able to get that done. You know, we were not in the office for really, you know, we're there at the same time. And, and I will say that it is a much bigger project than any of us anticipated. We're trying to do it by tax map number, individually by tax map number, so that we can go back. If something happened, God forbid, and our records were damaged, we will have these that we could go up and look at them per, by the tax map, uh, number individually. There are some, well, we just say, somebody on this board has a farm that has lots of pieces. And, and we are ripping those apart to, to scan them in individually because eventually they could be pulled apart. Um, and gosh, just to pull apart those files to scan and cut five, cut folders and take pictures so that they scan through is, is daunting, but it's very important work. I, I, you know, I've been doing this on and off now for, oh my gosh, since two thousand and four with a small break. And this, and the, I shouldn't say errors, but the things that we are finding that then we then have to, today I pulled a file apart. It took me three hours to find what was wrong with that file. It's slowing us down. But it's important work and it really will be a benefit to the town to make sure that that's done.
We're finding, when we set up the GIS program, um, we found a lot of errors. And, you know, we've gone from one computer to three, so we got three different people pulling apart things. And we're just finding errors from fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, before any of us were ever here. That just weren't, I won't say done wrong. They just weren't probably done enough or something. But it's just a lot of errors we're finding out. And then a lot of the things we're coming up with now are, come down to dollars. We're losing dollars by not, you know, get all this work done, so.
And I, I want to clarify just a little bit by errors that we are talking about. We're not talking about all of a sudden John Lulock's going to have to move out of his house because it's not really his. That's not what we're talking about, but, um.
Probable, though.
But his taxes may go up.
Yeah, yeah, we can never say that. I mean, that's not, that's not our decision. Um, taxes, uh, correlates to assessment, but it's not our business to tell you how much to pay for taxes. So anyway, uh, using Jeff as a, uh.
Guinea pig.
Yeah, as a guinea pig. With, with different tax map numbers for different parcels. Sometimes they were added and combined correctly, uh, per the state's requirements of doing that. And sometimes they were not. So what we're looking for in keeping records so that we don't have a catastrophe, but if we do have a catastrophe, we have complete records. We're also looking to, uh, follow the suggested guidelines by the state so that anyone can come in and open up a file and go, oh, okay, this is what we're talking about. This is what the Sheldon family owns and, and there is a, there's a lineage to all of these numbers. So I, I don't want anybody to panic thinking that there's a huge mistake in the lister's office. It's just, um, how, how these files were treated before.
So will that all be available online now?
Not, no. Well, I don't know. We haven't really, it could be. I suppose it could be, honestly.
It's not connected to that same system?
No, but I, no, but I, one of the things I discovered, uh, yesterday, not yesterday, yesterday, actually it was last week. Um, because it's, as I'm, as we're pulling this, these things apart to scan them, I'm, especially if there's three or four tax map numbers involved, I'm pulling it up to see, you know, who the players are. And we found one that's contiguous and, and it's showing contiguous on the new GIS, uh, access GIS map. But one piece is here and one piece is, you know, a mile and a half away. It can't be contiguous. So then it's like, okay, why is this listed as contiguous? Why is, what is going on? Two different owners now, but at some point, years ago, they weren't unlinked. That they were, as far as our records are concerned, the owners are correct, but somehow this one piece of this puzzle was never unlinked. And so that's slow, you know, then, then there's an hour wasted trying to figure out what happened and who it belongs to and why it's linked when it shouldn't be. So it's actually cleaning up a lot of, a lot of things that, without this fancy new website, we wouldn't know that this file is wrong. So it, it, it's actually, we're thrilled with all of it because it's really helping us to make sure that if somebody comes in, these records are absolutely perfectly accurate.
Another, another quick example is the state property that they bought from us, you know, up the old quarry. That, the day, the day the transfer came in from BLX to the state, also a survey map came. And it was back when Judy was alive and I'm not blaming anybody, but the survey map was currently just stuck aside. But we found that the state owns four foot and one acres more than what we're showing on our map. Now, the state isn't going to give us a lot of money, but if that's a landowner that owns four acres they're getting for free, that adds up. So these are the kinds of things we're finding. And it's not anybody's fault. It's just something that gets overlooked. But once you start scanning and, and things start getting right in your face, then you see, whoa, that's not right. And that's what we're trying to fix as we go.
So am I understanding what you're, what you're asking for, the five thousand that was taken out, put the five thousand back. That's, that's, that's what I hear you ask, and mainly what I hear you saying is because the workload is such that we could leave it there, but in order to get the work done, you're probably, probably not going to make that much.
Every year, the, the state gives us more work. Every year, the state gives us more work to, every year. Every year, we go to schools and we all of a sudden, damn, we got more work to do, you know?
And I think, I think as a board, you have seen us in action. We're not asking for money because we want to spend it frivolously. We have had, between COVID, we have had health issues. We have had family issues. If we're not able to work, if we're not able to be in the building, we're not using that money frivolously. But we are trying to be diligent in our duties, always doing what the state is asking us for and always trying to be cognizant of the town and that these records need to be saved and they need to be complete so that someone else coming into our office, anyone coming into our office, can see that these records are where they should be. And, and of course, last year, we had this extra money to scan, but we were blessed. And I say blessed. I mean, the one thing good that came out of COVID was this wonderful website we have that literally about brought us all to tears the first time we turned it on and, and all this stuff was up there. But Sharon and I, Tom, Tom kind of backed out of that one and let Sharon and I, you know, reap the benefits of that.
I'm retired.
You're retired, yeah. But we spent forty hours a week for weeks and weeks and weeks on that.
They did a good job.
That did not, which we did not get to then spend on, on the scanning. You know, and that got pushed to the back burner. But well, you know, it was well worth it. This site has.
It's pretty nice to have a.
And I, and I see get compliments all the time from researchers.
And that's another thing with the budget. Because as we train more and more realtors and lawyers to go to the site, we get less phone calls. So, we can work on what it is we need to do versus talking to some realtor or somebody from India that wants this or that. We just say, we're going to send you a link. You go look at it and you, you spend as much time as you want because we're not on the phone with you. And it's been great for that. So, it's saving us money on our budget by just having that site there. And people are looking for it. And it's, it's great. So, we're always trying to think of how can we make the office better? And, and that's the goal and get the work done.
Other questions?
You anticipate being five thousand or higher than last year?
No, no, they had five thousand taken out.
Same as last.
Except your actual was twenty thousand. That's, that's where he's getting the number from.
And so, our actual.
So, you're actually, you're asking for five thousand above what you did last year?
We've been twenty-five for what, two or three years now.
And our actual.
The actual was five thousand.
But the actual.
There was also payment from the state because of the corneal. Yeah, so we, yeah.
And like I said, we pushed a lot of stuff forward because of COVID. Last year, we could not do.
Now, I'm here. I, I just, you think there's actually five thousand more than what you did?
We haven't even touched, I haven't even gotten through the first file of scanning. What are there? Eight drawers? I'm not through the first one.
Oh, they.
Again, we have not.
Then how come S's were first?
Uh, that's what? Tax map numbers.
Interesting.
About a tax map number on the name. It was a good try, Jeff.
Yeah, whatever.
Try you out first.
Not alphabetical.
Um, other questions for the Listers? The other items were.
What's the?
What's the light, just curiosity, what's the license fee?
Well.
For the software?
It's the software.
For, yeah, for NEMRIC and the.
So, it's that connection to NEMRIC?
Everything seems to have one of those now.
Yeah. Oh, everything does.
Yeah.
Some of the stuff got reclassified. It's just called a license now.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, other questions in glass?
Where are we going with it?
No, right, only, only for us, the board to say, okay, it sounds like twenty is not enough. I'm, I'm making the assumption, Joe, it's like what Jeff said, it's based on the fact that the actual for a couple of cycles was a little over nineteen, but that was COVID-related. The last actual before that was close to twenty-three. So, I'm saying you probably want to raise that at, at minimum to twenty-three. But with what we've heard right here, if that allows us to get some appraisals done on some, all these properties that are selling at a higher amount and different things are going on, it's probably going to pay itself back.
It, it should.
Yeah, there, there should be. I, I.
How does our hand side only hurts the town?
I, I, I don't, don't have a problem with putting it back to the twenty-five it's been right along.
Yep, I agree.
Others? You're good?
That's where I would stand.
All right, currently, we'll go back to twenty, not back to, we'll leave it.
We can come on your budget. We'll come on your budget.
Yeah, you guys aren't going to.
First take the taxes too. We're.
Yeah, it's our tax one too. That's the beauty of having Listers. We pay taxes too.
What I hear you saying, it's a real, that's a more of a realistic budget.
Absolutely. We feel it is.
Okay, other questions in general for the Lister's budget?
Nope, rest is pretty much the same.
Thank you guys.
How many years is it going to take to finish those records up?
Oh, God.
If you help, it'll go quicker.
It was just a question.
I, I think Jeff, the way we would look at it now is we would just kind of spread it out so that we don't blow a budget. Just try to do a little each year because we just, it's like I said to Danny. When I was building, I spent most of my career remodeling, so I'm used to opening up cans of worms. And this is what we've opened up, is a can of worms. So, it's like I said to Danny, Danny actually called me at home today and we talked about one of the properties. And I said, just do what you got to do. Fix it. Don't worry about how much time it takes because you got to fix it. So, that's where we're at. So, I would say we won't even try to do it all this year. We'll just try to do a chunk of it and keep going. But we've also, we're, I think this year, we're going to get clobbered by the state on our CLA because of these values on homes. So, we're going to have to start looking at a reappraisal too.
I mean, it's twelve years out anyway.
Yeah, twelve years out.
It's too old anyway, but certainly.
Where are we?
That house in Fairhaven that's selling for, what, close to three hundred thousand over?
Yeah, there's, you got, I just looked today. One was two seventy-seven over assessed value. There's three or four of them that are two hundred over.
Some haven't even come back.
Lot of them in the hundred to hundred and fifty bracket. There's over thirty-five houses that are way over, not ten over, twelve over, fifty over, hundred over, hundred and fifty over. Those houses looked at. A good example is Jake Elms. That house Sharon and I looked at that and Hattica owned it and it was a pit bed, but it's had a total renovation. You know, and it's, it's on the books for what, one twenty-something?
One twenty-five.
And it sold for two seventy-five. So, we need to get in there and look at that, you know, and that, that's the thing.
If we can, if the state's going to let us this year, you know?
And a lot of these people coming out of state, you know, they're just coming from other places. That's nothing to them. So.
All right, good. What is the CLA currently? I'm curious.
One hundred and thirteen, is that what it is? It was, but it was, we were over, but this is a three-year study. This one is.
This year.
Yeah, it's going to, well, maybe that was two years ago.
I think we only got four properties that sold under the assessed value. And a couple of those are what the state will call invalid because they were either repos or something. But, you know, four out of thirty-five was not good, you know? It's not going to help us much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Are you locking up?
No.
All right, delinquent tax collecting.
Yep, so, so that one's me. No changes on that. We're doing most of our sales in-house. We might use a little bit of professional fee. You see in twenty, that was, that was actually a demo of a house, so. Yeah, no change.
The fifty-six hundred, that was the demo?
The twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Oh, sorry, I got you wrong. Yeah, okay.
That's an anomaly.
All right, um, planning commission?
Yep, so Phil's here to talk, if you have questions about any of these. But so for the planning commission, you did see secretarial services did go up. The planning commission has seen more, more work lately, so they need to hire, they need to hire that out. So, that increase corresponds with more, more time with the secretary. More work for the commission also means more advertising, which is why you see that there. And the planning salary, that was reduced, that stipends for the planning commission. I'm not sure why that was.
Due, due to the, excuse me, if I may speak, the reduced membership.
Okay, so there's.
Seven to five.
Members and not looking for the same, uh, small amount for each member. So, that's the reason for the reduction in that.
There's five, right, Phil, now?
Yes, rather than seven previously.
No, I understand that they pushed the, the town plan. I, I think it's the planning commission that works on updating the, the town plan.
Correct. There's no regulation update in the town plan, yes.
And the town plan, I know they, they pushed it out a couple of years from when it was due. But are we, when we start working on that, we'll need to put some, I would think there's probably going to be some more time and money in that?
You mean involved with it? Well, in talking with Joe earlier today, it's a possibility that we'll have received grant money to be able to help with that.
Help with that? So, we won't need to, good.
No guarantees.
Yeah, I mean, but that isn't, the planning commission didn't, as far as I know, discuss or ask for anything different for that work that's, that will be coming on now because it is a couple of years away now. But you are correct. It is, is coming up and we don't want to be caught short with, right.
Well, that, that was the, the, what I'm saying, if we need to put some money in and get the, get the ball rolling, probably wouldn't be.
A bad idea.
Yep.
Well, that I, I can't speak to that, you know, for the commission. I don't know. But I, I do agree that you're correct. It is coming up and it is something that should be not left to the last minute. Hopefully, our town plan isn't large and complicated. But I'm not sure what the state requires now, whether there's something new that's a component that they require in the town plans. So, whether there's something different that has to be added and worked on, I just am not aware of it at this time, but there, there could well be.
And I think Bob Richards is our representative on the Rutland Planning Commission now. I know the other, a lot of other towns are re, are doing their plans right now, so we might even be able to get them to do some, Rutland Planning Commission to do some work for us, but.
Well, I think if, if our local planning commission can use the expertise of, of regional, they should help with anything and make our local commission aware of any, any needs in a redo of the town plan by state mandate. And if we have grant money, maybe a lot of it could be shifted to regional to be able to do the heavy lifting on it. But I, I think our town plan was, is good. Our last one is very good. It's very well done by the planning commission. And hopefully, it won't need any, any drastic alterations, you know, coming up with, having a new plan approved.
Good.
All right. Anything, Phil, you want to add to this? I mean, it's pretty basic for.
Yeah, I, again, I was there when they discussed it. I don't have their figures in front of me. But they tried to, to be realistic with what they knew were, were greater expenses. With bigger projects coming through, we're fortunate to have development that's, that's come through this year. And it just does cause for more, more hours, more time with the, the recording, more time with the, the decision-making in bigger projects. So, I'm saying they've been, they've been busy as well as with the update, with taking out the projects that are coming through and the, the different parts that are required in the zoning process. But I think that they've got a good, you know, my, my estimation, a good asking for their, their budget.
Okay. Um, municipal zoning, I mean, there's not much, there's not much in there for.
No, they ask for, the, the fees are paid to cover the expenses of the hearing. As you know, the zoning board meets only when they have required business, either appeal of my decision, a floodplain application, or additional use application. So, the, the cost for the advertising for the hearings are covered with the fees. And they, I believe, I, again, don't have their figures, but normally ask for educational amount to be able to go for training if it's available.
Yeah, they've got dues and meeting fees.
Yes, correct.
Yep.
Yep. There are several members that, it's unusual that, that will try and, and take in trainings and improve with what they get from it. And I always think that's, that's.
That's a good thing.
If they can be more proficient from what they learn. That's never a bad thing.
No.
Yep. I mean, the only other one was thirty-six-ten, which I believe that's Phil's office, right? That's just salary, which.
That's just the two and a quarter.
Two and a quarter percent and then ninety-five dollars for office supplies. You're not. You're not spending a lot there, are you? Um, questions for Phil for those three areas?
No, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I hope that the, the planning commission chair, I've been here for you tonight. I gave him the date and was looking forward to having him here for any questions you might have. I'll get after him when I see him about not showing up tonight.
Um, Dave Amy.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Phil.
Sure, for sure.
What do we got next? You got memberships on your top list.
Building grounds?
On the page nine. I'm going by order on Joe's agenda here.
All right. I see what you're doing. Here we go, yeah.
So, for, for memberships, we didn't see any changes in the budget, though I, I was reminded that our, our PC, Rutland Regional Planning, or I'm sorry, REDIC, our EDC is Cedar now, and that, that needs to be adjusted. So, thank you for.
And we should ask, now that we've had time to think about Mr. Jepson Lyles.
His request.
His request of a dollar per citizen or five hundred dollars. I mean, Joe has five hundred in there as a placeholder, I believe, right?
Yes.
That's what we did last year.
Correct.
I was, when I looked at that one, was thinking for, he was asking for the, the promotion and, and they, they've really done a lot to help us with, with, with the sidewalks grants and with that, with David, with David Neary and everything. I was wondering if we, if that promotion, I, I don't think we, we can do the dollar per person. But if we took the five hundred dollar promotion and had that, made that a thousand dollars. Because Cedar also, the membership is five hundred, comes out to fifteen. To me, for what we're getting, it felt more, more, a little more reasonable because we, we are. They, they, we, we've, we've given them a lot of feedback of wanting help in everything here. And they look like they're doing a pretty good job of responding. I'd kind of like to.
Yep.
Well, I, I don't know what the rest of you think, but I'd like to let them know that we see it, we feel it.
Yeah.
And the way to do that is by increasing that amount.
So, that would be.
If we change the, the promotion.
Eighty-seven-twenty, right, to five, to a thousand is what you're suggesting?
Right, move the five hundred to a thousand.
For the promotion.
For the promotion.
Promotion line.
That's, that's the one where they're going to update the, the website, the Fairhaven website, but also try to work more with us for sending people who want to start businesses that they can't handle and want to us.
I don't see any no's on that, Joe, so.
It's a little old, but the numbers.
So, we'll change that promotion line to a thousand?
Yes.
Other. Regularly to plan and commission these. Rutland Planning Commission, these. Rutland Humane Society, I haven't looked at the budget in a couple of years, but is that, that's not an appropriation that's in the budget? What's that?
Weirdly enough, it's been there since I've been here, I don't have an explanation for it. I've taken cats there from the town, so maybe that's what it was.
In addition to the five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Just that, just that they thought, there's not other items in there for other organizations, which.
That is a weird one.
Yeah.
No, I don't disagree, it's just weird being.
It's not something about a service that they provide, is it, that if you're.
Is it a countywide?
If you're like a member, then you can take.
It could be, yeah.
I think it's something like that, but I can't. I can't promise you that that's what it is, but it's something.
Happened to me too.
I think, don't hold me to that, Joe, maybe look into it.
Other questions on memberships? Town manager, back to, so. We did these at the last meeting, but we went over them, you know, folks just did a kind of very general kind of overview of them. Rod and I were the only ones here, Jeff was online, so we didn't really ask a lot of questions. So Joe was just going to kind of review them again at this meeting, just to see if there's anything that sticks out and questions. So we'll start with town manager, page one.
So for the, for town manager, it's the two and a quarter percent increase in salary, and then that five hundred dollar increase, that is for my ICMA membership. I did strip out the travel mileage, it's not something that I've used and that I'll ever use. It's just taking tax money if we put that there.
Municipal building, page three.
Unit building is up a little bit, yeah, office, office supplies, we added eight hundred. It's, I mean, it's a nineteen percent increase, my biggest concern was inflation. I went back through today just to see how inflation was and what we were projected. If the board wanted to pull that eight hundred out, we should be okay. It seems like we've kind of hit a peak with certain things, and paper products seem to be one of those.
I don't agree, but if you are saying we can pull it out, pull it out.
That's, I mean, if I go over by a hundred bucks or something, I mean, it's not going to break the bank. I'd rather have money in somebody else's pocket than having it sit in our bank account, so. I would suggest.
About forty-two?
Four thousand two hundred?
I would suggest.
Other items, Joe, that are?
Yeah, so for tech services, that again, that's the NEMR increase. And that's, really, everything else is flat funded in that budget.
Questions for her?
I just had a couple of questions, not looking to take anything out. Under the fuel and propane, thirty-seven-ten, twenty-one, twenty there. That, with everything, with the price of fuel and propane going so high, my only question on that was, is that going to be enough?
It's, that was one of the things I looked at today, that's actually what prompted me to check the inflation rate. Fuel and heating oil is way up, it seemed, the price seemed to break. I was not, to be honest, I didn't increase that because I didn't know what the increase was going to look like between now and, you know, next March. He could have bought it at seventy. So if the board felt comfortable adding, that would be fine, but I just, I didn't know what the increase would be. And we've gotten along pretty good with that number, so again, if we're over a little bit, it's not going to kill us.
If your actual is eighty-eight-hundred.
Right. I'm okay, we just, just.
I think there's some room there.
That's what I'm saying, if we're over a little bit, it's not going to kill us a hundred or even.
I wouldn't cut it, but I think it's.
I wouldn't.
The other, the other line item, just under repair and maintenance supply, and I know it was brought up at your last meeting about the needing to do some major work with the painting, the eaves and other things here, and I'm going, are we hoping that with the refurbishment, we're going to fix, take monies and use them from refurbishment, because that five hundred doesn't look like much is going to.
It's not, it's meant to do like a coat of paint and a rug.
Right.
Plugs in.
Fix a broken tile or things like that, but.
And the only thing I'm looking at is saying, okay, looking at the town office, do we, do we start looking at saying, okay, we put enough in to fix these this year, next year, we're doing something else, but I think if we, we, I'm a little concerned about kicking the can too far down the road and having a huge price tag too.
I think we should start a list, so, which I think he has on his all part, but that, at the end, maybe have that discussion.
Okay.
Because I think this number's going to scare you.
Oh, I think, I think we're going to be looking to.
Well, and that can's been kicked already, I mean, it's at the end of the road and. It's going to need a lot of work.
So for that one Glenn, as a.
I'm just saying, be careful what we throw back in there.
I was, it's not on the list that I provided today, but I was going to ask the board if they felt comfortable putting that as an article to ask the town. Would you like to, would town, do you want to spend fifty thousand dollars to repair?
To repair.
Which I think will be good once we get to the bottom line, we can kind of work on those.
I like that.
It's nice also to have, yeah, voter buy-in on that.
Fifty thousand is a lot to put in a budget and then try to justify it.
Okay, yeah, I like that approach, I'm good.
Okay, that was municipal.
Where are we now?
Health inspector.
Youth trade level, right?
We're on page seven.
We just moved John's travel, health inspector travel up to salary because he wasn't, you know, taking that.
Traveling for her? Alright, any questions for John?
No. They're probably, are having a hard time getting the stuff to replace it, right?
I think the furnace is supposed to have been here a week ago, it's not here yet.
I think it's a logistic, I don't know who we're talking about or anything, but logistics are a nightmare right now, so.
Alright, baseball activities, page E.
Baseball activity did come down a little bit, you'll see a salary increase, that's for the rec directors' time, as well as a little bit extra for her assistant to help her organize baseball in the beginning of the season.
Nicole was on the meeting last, last time, she talked general about.
Expanding services and how much of that's reflected in here? This is basically a level budget, right? She would like even more.
I think she wanted under rec, right? The rec department, not baseball.
That's the thirty-seven.
Is it softball too?
Yes. Should say athletic or something.
Yeah, because it's bigger than baseball, but it's our.
Tradition.
It's our tradition, yeah.
Exactly.
Yep.
Questions on the activities section?
No. Just take me back.
Oh, you're down rec.
Back to the fifty-six.
Recreation?
Back through the fifty-six, the increase?
The increase in the summer wages.
The summer wages.
Walk me through it one more time.
Yep, so that was, what that reflects is the increase in minimum wage. I broke it down just so that way I have it, so we have, we have seven counselors and two spare. They're now making eleven-seventy-five, thirty hours a week. That comes to a little more than seventeen thousand. The assistant is lumped into there at thirty hours a week for seven weeks, which is thirty-three hundred, rounded it up to twenty thousand six hundred. So yeah, that was almost entirely a minimum wage hike.
I guess I'd like to see what her plan is for expanding the program. You know, it's nice to just talk about as a director or whatever, but I'd really like to see how that all penciled out in a budget scenario, and, you know, how many kids are they going to service? Is it additional kids served, is it just expanded programs? How many more people do they need? What are the economics, is it going to, can it at least sustain itself? And maybe not in the first year, but maybe.
We've moved in that direction, we do charge for certain, certain activities. And during COVID, we started taking some outside students in from outside the town, and then charging them when maybe our students weren't charged in town. So we are trying to generate a revenue from that, and the rec director would help in that, in that aspect. We'd expand services such as having a soccer program, because people are really looking for that, but they're rolling down to Rutland to play. So that would be one, one sport to target.
I'm a big fan of, you know, expanding the program and having those services for our kids. I just, I don't, I'm not comfortable just dumping five thousand in the budget and saying.
Figure it out.
Figure it out, yeah. I'd like to have a little more plan.
What are we getting?
And I know it's not in there, I'm just talking, but I, I'd really like to see it in there, so that's what I'm kind of pushing for, is see that plan.
And you've got to be careful too about paying for it all with revenue.
No, no.
Given our free reduced rate in town, we don't want to take opportunity away from kids that can't afford it.
No, no, I'm not necessarily, I guess I just want to know what it looks like.
No, I know, and Nicole, she did mention she would come back if we had specifics, so.
We can draft something up and give it to the board and see what you think. She has a lot of good ideas, Nicole is very forward-thinking, forward-thinking and active.
And whether you have the people to support the program, like, can we find the people to run that additional program? Or is it just going to sit? Are we going to budget five grand and nothing's going to, we don't have people to run it, so it doesn't happen? Which is possible.
Right, or my other concern, build it and they will come and they don't.
They don't come?
Yeah.
So we had, we had.
And I don't really mind subsidizing the cost of it either, I just.
So we, I'm not going to call.
Sorry Joe.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I talked over you. It wasn't, well, you guys were talking, so we didn't have an incident, but as a point to what we were talking about last time with a full-year, part-time rec director. You know, we were putting the trees out in the park, and only Lorraine showed up. So she had to go and she had to wrangle some help, and she did get two other people, but still, we did have to have two DPW guys come and move Christmas trees and help, you know, move things around. We're paying for somebody to do rec for the town, we're just calling it DPW. DPW puts out the barrels, DPW moves picnic tables, DPW puts up Christmas trees, DPW moves the sticks. They're doing rec things, DPW cuts the grass, they're doing rec things, we're just not calling it rec, is what it's boiling down to, so you're paying for.
They've never been defined that way.
No, I would counter that.
No, but so, Joe Festa cleans.
I'm paying for them whether they're doing that or.
Well, Joe Festa cleans the toilets, but why isn't the long cut shorter? Because Joe Festa's cleaning the toilets.
But the rec director isn't going to do any of that stuff except rec, so you have to be cognizant of the fact that it's only going to take what they're doing for rec out of it.
There's other costs too, running rec programs. For sure. Carolyn has more questions about recreation.
Two thirty.
Special events?
No change in special events.
Just the question we had about the, Lorraine had a question about.
And I, about some money, I listened to that when she was talking about, do you have some money to help? And I looked nice at, if we put two hundred and fifty in the budget, two hundred and fifty dollars, now that's not a lot of money, but is that some money that we can say, go buy some Christmas lights or do something to help offset some of that? And then, no, under special events, Christmas, I think, wasn't it at the last meeting?
I thought she wanted like an IBC.
An individual line, but Joe was.
But, yeah, I look at it and I'm saying, I don't know about IBC, individual line, but it was, I thought it was.
They could have asked for some money.
And I think Joe's done that under his, I know Joe said, he told me he's been, you know, doing things with them under some of these categories already.
Under the rec.
Under the rec part, yeah.
And we're keeping good track of that? Okay.
I'm not, I'm not tracking recreation as IBC recreation and recreation as soccer recreation and recreation as fire pit recreation, it's all just recreation.
Other questions for special events? Okay, page nine was intergovernmental expenses. Not much there, that's the set tax by the county.
And we probably don't know that number yet, do we?
I haven't received yet, I'm hoping by the end of the year.
That is not a real number, just so everybody knows.
The actual of this year was nineteen-nine, so I mean, that could be, could even be low. And judgments, and yeah, I think it will too, and damages.
Yeah, we reduce that because of the, what's it called? The thing that thousand dollars you have to pay out front for insurance, thank you, that word.
It is one of them.
Our deductible came down from two thousand to one thousand, so I cut that line in half.
So we're getting there Joe, right? We've got.
Yes, we're back on track.
Perfect.
What is the?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just wondering, did you skip me, Muni Zone?
You went, we did talk about it, but you, yes.
I just wanted to make sure I'd answered any questions, if you had questions about my.
It was quick because it's really just your salary and the.
That's it, sure, and the flag, so I'm sorry, so.
No, no, that's fine.
Are you out of the room?
We're sorry that we kept you here for.
No, because we talked about the office supplies too, the ninety-five and. And that gives you enough time to do, I mean, with, is it kind of follow the planning commission with increased meetings? Does it put more time on yours?
I'm there for their meeting times and trying to help them if they need me to research something. But generally, it stays to those small number of hours twice a month with the planning commission. So, no, I don't find that, again, I try and estimate for something, I'm not sure what kind of business is going to come our way with zoning applications and projects. But I think it's a fine amount of hours that I planned on to cover. So I feel fine, fine with that figure, if you feel fine with that figure. Do you wish me, I don't want to walk away from you, I see zoning regulation updates are on here, there's later on.
Yeah, that's our parking lot, which we usually just go over unless there is an update, and if you want, if you have an update for.
Just that, I wanted to inform, I told Joe that the planning commission, two things, in their defense, we had COVID that threw things off, but no meetings. We lost members that were long-term members, some from frustration and some that hadn't had enough. And we had new members, so they have tried to get on track with spending at least a half an hour every meeting time to work on the zoning update, and I think they're making progress, but it's. But it's difficult to pull things from a year ago, a year and a half ago, decisions that were made on update changes, and now bring them back up, review them and stick them in that update. So they are, are forging ahead, and I feel good about their work on, on trying to get the updates done. So that's all I'd like to just inform you about, that they haven't, have not been slack with it. Between the changeover, loss of members, new members, it's taken a little bit to get up to speed, and I think they're trying to, to get there as quickly as they can.
Yeah, I know, from my standpoint, the reason it's in the parking lot for me is knowing that we have a, they're rewrite working on it, and as a board member, I'd like to stay up to speed on what's being worked on.
Sure.
And, and also, when we look at the, the big things about, like, personally, in, in, what's in, being zoned industrial, and do we, do we relook and are there some places where we're reaching out trying to bring business in here of where we can point them in the direction of what's zoned properly, so they, we're not, we're giving them some good advice, so that's the reason.
Well, and certainly, as zoning administrator, I'm kind of the first contact for people looking to develop some of the times, as well as the town manager. So I try to be pro-business with someone coming in and looking at possibly developing in Fairhaven, and want to have regulations that will be suitable for that. You know, it is important, it's very important, to have space for different kinds of development, and have the districts to cover that ability, and to have your uses that are allowed, in your table of uses, to allow businesses possibly that are unique to come in. So hopefully, some of the changes will involve that, and you'll look those over when you look at the update. I've suggested different things with the table of uses to make it more flexible. But I certainly agree with you, yeah, it is important. And you should all be clear on what the districts are and what the uses are. And when you review things, you know, if there's something that you feel is, is necessary, you have that ability.
I think of the summer when chickens were a big topic.
Chickens are still a topic for me.
Still a big topic?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, in my, my short spiel in the town report, I mentioned the problem with chickens.
And it's so, there's opinions, I mean, we had folks here that night, one loved them, one didn't want them, and it was...
And one said, what are you guys arguing about chickens for?
I agree, it seems, you know, farcical, but if you're a chicken lover and you have chickens and fresh eggs,
Absolutely.
It's a big deal, but we've had this, this one acre law with the, the keeping of animals as long as I've been zoning administrator, and it seems that COVID has brought on the, the return of the chicken farmers, shall we say, on small lots, and, and sometimes that's not too great for someone next door when you have a rooster appear and chicken manure appearing close to your, your line. So it can be really, really a problem in your, your neighborhoods with compact housing around it. So I would love to have the chicken thing go away, it may be happy as could be.
Thank you for coming in, we appreciate it.
Sure.
Alright, thanks, Bill.
Gentlemen and ladies, have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other parking lot items? No? Board roundtable? Anybody for a board roundtable? Jeff, the expenditure, or, review of finance reports?
Motion to pay the warrant, check warrant. General fund warrant.
Yep.
One million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine... One million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second?
Five hundred twenty-six thousand, and that is a school payment. Four hundred seventy-three thousand is a wastewater treatment facility payment, and seventy-four thousand, it's almost seventy-five thousand, is a quarterly appropriation payment.
Oh, you made the, Jeff made the motion second by Glenn. Any other questions on the motion? Claire, you got the figure?
I did, yes, thank you.
Alright, all in favor? Okay, that motion carries and payroll?
Motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty-three thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-two cents.
Second?
Motion by Jeff, second by Glenn for the payroll warrant. Questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Executive session for the manager's review, is there a motion for that? Oh, sorry, checkbook status?
Three hundred eighty-two thousand, sorry.
Checked it off too soon.
Three hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred eighteen, and two cents.
Sorry about that.
And I'll make motion to move into executive session for manager review, one DSA, three thirteen, A three.
Is there a second? Motion by Glenn, second by Carol. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.